I'd like to welcome. Oh, sorry.
Now you're in.
All right, we're recording the progress. 10 o'clock, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Do you have any public comment? Let's see, any additions to the agenda? You guys have any additions today?
I do not.
Okay. I have one addition. At 10:40, we're going to have Kathy Crockett with Community Corrections join us with her budget. Reading an approval of minutes. Does everyone have a chance to read the minutes from March 21st?
I have. I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Everyone have a chance to read the minutes from April 4th?
I have.
Okay, look for a motion to approve.
Also move.
Second.
Okay, we moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. And the minutes from April 24th. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right, Commissioner Arrabas.
Not there, I don't think.
Commissioner Knoll?
No, I don't have any today.
I have a senior village advisory board meeting Wednesday, and then attended the 47th Annual Kansas County Commissioned Association Spring Conference last week, and received a ton of great information, which I plan to recap to you guys for discussion next week. All right. First order of business is Stacy Waggles, solid waste manager, bid opening for scale house and recycle building.
And Joe is going to open those and read them.
Okay. Joe, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no problem. I'm Joe Pontius, architect of rural privacy for architects and engineers. And I've met several of you, many of you already. Yeah, we were contracted a while ago to get this process rolling for building on the scale house projects. And so we're happy to get to this point now. And Stacy and Joe, you're here personally as well. So I'll go ahead and open the bids in order that we receive them. And we'll start with L&amp;L Construction. So they've acknowledged addendums one and two, which is the amount of the dentists that we sent out. So the first base bid for the transfer building is $435,900. That's $435,900. Okay, then the second base bid for the scale house is $248,950. Sorry?
Nine fifty?
Yeah, nine fifty, set. So two four eight nine five zero. Okay. The total that they have for both projects is $684,850. Six hundred, six eight four eight five zero. All right. The next bid that we're going to open is for Herner Construction.
Can you say that again?
Herner Construction.
H?
Yeah, H-E-R-N-E-R. They have acknowledged addendums one and two as well. The base bid for the transfer building is $375,000. That's three seven five zero zero zero. The base bid for the scale house is $417,000. That's four one seven zero zero zero. And the total for both projects combined is $792,000. That is it, that's seven nine two zero zero zero. Have the Lear Construction. Our last and final bid here.
Spell that, please.
Lear is spelled L-E-H-R. Okay. Our first, or they have acknowledged addendums one and two to start with. The base bid for the transfer building is $426,940. Four two six nine four zero. The base bid for the new scale house is $452,863. That's four five two eight six three. The total for both projects is $879,803. So eight seven nine eight oh three. And we don't have a bid for system builders.
What was the last part you said? You don't have a bid for?
We don't have a bid for the last one, the system builders.
Oh, is that?
There's only three bids.
Oh, okay.
We had on our sheet.
Okay, see, we don't have that.
Possibility.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So here. Sorry. Normally passing out to the contractors.
Yeah. That's two.
Okay, thank you.
That's the part we didn't, they just had one more on their list.
Okay. All right, so that concludes the bid opening for this portion. Thank you, contractors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we made it in there that we were going to decide within a week, right?
Yes, that was the idea, was award contractor.
So you guys will go back, put your heads together, and come back with a recommendation? Yep.
So does this have to be done as a total from one contractor? Or can you do the scale house with one contractor and the transfer of the building together? How is it presented to them?
Just because of mobilization.
Right.
Their buildings are right next to each other. We thought it would best to have one contractor.
Okay, I assumed as much, I wouldn't be sure.
Yeah, and what we're saying is that the bid that counts on these, we're just, the base bid one and two are just for accounting purposes only, to keep the buildings separated for accounting purposes only. So we're only awarding to the contractor of the total of the two buildings.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark Stilber, finance director, ARPA reporting.
Morning.
Morning.
So April 30th, 2023, was the annual report deadline for ARPA. So I submitted our ARPA report with the help of the Lloyd Group. They compiled our reports, our numbers, the amount that we have spent so far, and the amount that was encumbered in the commission minutes. So that is just a summary report that I'm going to present to you this morning. It shows the allocation we got in total for ARPA and the total that we have remaining for ARPA. And it would just need the commission signature.
Now, these reporting dates, are they, they're known way ahead of time?
Yeah.
And so that's, it was something that?
Yeah, it, those are fixed dates that are set by the federal government. That's when they want their deadline to report the numbers on. And so we submitted the report just fine. It was accepted correctly, and we are still in compliance and just moving forward.
Do you have this report on?
I do.
Did you send it?
Would you like to send?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, all three of us.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at this correctly. And you?
So the, the back page is the ones that's been spent and then committed.
Yep, and you just need us all to sign our?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the rescue, ARPA rescue expenditure tracking summary provided by our financial director and the Lloyd Group that outlines that Atchison County's total ARPA allocation was $3,121,992. Currently, we have allocated $481,005 of that, leaving unencumbered remaining of $2,640,987 of a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Sign down here.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you for that, Mark. Next on the list is Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge, with the contract documents for Morton Road project.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. We have four copies that need to be signed and dated with today's date. And we, we put one that goes to the clerk, one goes to Roden Bridge, and the other two, one goes to Harbor, and the other one goes back to Gabe. And if it's dated today, May 2nd, then the estimated start date would be June 1st, and the completion date by July 31st on Morton Road. So these.
That's good.
And there's a bunch of them there, so. So any questions on that? And I will let you read this. Did I send this with the email?
Yes, the letter.
Yes.
So that was one thing, because when I read it, and I just want to say this for clarification, when I read it, I thought we were dating it based on award, the meeting we awarded it to.
No.
So we're dating it today.
We're dating it today.
Okay.
And then that, that's the way I understand it.
Okay.
And then that will show today as the contract sign date, and. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure of that, because, so the document I signed for a notice of award was March 14th.
Right.
So I just want to.
Right.
Okay.
So then you go to each one of those tabs.
And today's date.
Today's date, and sign them. And they gave. It's for the bonds and everything.
Okay.
And then they've got W9. And we've done everything else as far as PECs and all those, so. And I don't know if you want to do those, if you have to do those all right now, or afterwards, or how?
Yeah, no, you're fine, I just wanted to make sure, because many of these are just the date. So these are just the dates, and then just my signature. So I just want to make sure I'm calling for what?
This says, "At the earliest convenience, please present the contract documents to the commission chairwoman for signature, and have a second commissioner attest to the signing of the date agreement." Additionally, please date the bonds to coincide with the date of the contract signature.
So I'll just have one of you be my attest instead of, okay.
And then here's, here's the email that I got. I didn't forward this to you guys. "I anticipate the contract date will be May 2nd, 2023. Start date will be June 1st, 2023. Estimated completion date, July 31st, 2023."
Perfect, yeah, that's, I just want to make sure of that. Okay, so I look for a motion to allow the chair, as well as the vice chair, to sign the contract documents and technical specifications for the Morton Road Mill and Overlay project as presented by our Roden Bridge superintendent, Joe Snyder.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. So if you're okay, we'll take our time and do these in a bit. Okay?
Okay, and secondly, I've got some POs. The PO for the retriever, the amount was supposed to be $10,702.20, and we had $10,027, or $72.20. So it just needs to be corrected from $10,072 to $10,702.
Okay. Okay, I look for a motion to approve the purchase order from the Roden Bridge to Tiger Mowers. As in the amount of $10,702.20, and this is amending a previous.
Yes.
Also move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Then I have a PO to pay rural water district number five, $19,801. It cost him to relocate the water line. It was previously approved by the commissioners.
Is the front, uh, does it come out again?
$19,801.
So move.
On 310th Road.
On 310th, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
All right, and I have another one. This one's for culverts. So we've been putting in several culverts, and we've found several, several more that are bad. And going through metal culverts where we, we have before, because they have the culverts that we like. And included in this is $10,000 worth of mint and townships culverts. They're the only ones that's contacted me, and that $10,000 once we get will come off. It's $55,591.07 with metal culverts in Maryville.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
And then I just sent you guys an email, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it. The signed truck body that I've been waiting on, he just got me to quote today, $29,886. This is another one of the purchase agreements. If you guys are on board with that, the money will come out of special machinery. So we can get our truck down there, and hopefully, it'll probably take six weeks before it gets here.
Where's it located?
Wichita is where it's at, Master Tech. This is where we bought our last two guy trucks.
Bed on and everything.
Yeah, they take the old bed off, put the bed on. And then I attached some pictures in a second email. Sorry, I didn't get them in, in the first one. But I didn't have time to get the PO put together, but I just wanted you guys to look at it. If you're on board, fine, if not, we'll discuss.
And Master Truck is part of the program of the source well.
Yeah, but this one isn't. This is the only bed I have found that's this way. It's completely different than any of the other ones.
Okay, I knew you were looking at it, I just wanted to make sure.
Their source well, but this part's not, so.
All right, I would look for a motion to approve a 2022 Ford F-350 signed truck in the amount of $29,886 coming out of special machinery. Do you have a motion to approve?
This is the bed for the signed truck.
Yes, we have the pickup.
Yes.
They put the bed on it.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Got a question for you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
I see the, the.
We're not using the bed, we're not buying the bed.
You're not buying that bed?
No.
What's this up here?
That there was a drill.
That's a drill, oh.
So.
Gotcha.
That whole setup there with the truck and everything's $200,000. So we're just doing the main bed.
Okay.
And I bought a gas-powered driver right now that they really, really like.
Yeah.
And if it gets to where we run into, it's not heavy enough to drive, we can put an air compressor on there and an air hammer to drive our posts. But they went out yesterday and put in more signs than we have, and I don't know how long. So, and then that shows that the one side folds down right there, and then I flip. It's hard for me, so each one of the signs can go in those slots, so they're not running around. Underneath the bed, we can shove our posts in, so that we have a place to carry them. It's, it's really unique, and then the drawers, if you look on the back, on the drawers, they're all slide. And then the door is a roll-down door, so it should keep most all the dust and everything out of them and the water.
That'd be nice.
So it's a lot, you know.
Yeah, lots of storage.
Yes, a lot of storage, so. Then I have on here, just letting you be aware of, the first cost estimate on the 310 project was $171,000, and the second one is $231,000. So I'm just kind of letting you guys know that everything's, and this is just the estimate. You know, I don't know what the.
On the which project?
This is 310th.
Oh, okay.
Up there. So I just wanted you to be aware that things are going to be coming in higher, probably. So.
Not surprised.
I will do everything we can, we've got to figure out a way to make it work, but we will try. The other thing I wanted to bring up today is, me and the Morton project is this close. The difference that we were short. Because remember, we estimated at 1.3 million, it ended up costing 1.9. And the commission said that we would find a way to make up that difference of the $296,000. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so I just want to bring that up, so.
We'll work with.
When it gets time to, to pay how, we're going to make that difference. All right, anybody have?
That was 296.
Thank you.
Because we were taking the first shortfall, you know, the difference out of Special Highway. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I don't think I have.
How's the progress on the new bridge going in?
I haven't been down to that one. The one, the one, they started pouring last week, I think, or they had the bridge out last week on the one there, the big bridge, on me. And the other bridge, I was there last week, and they had, the bridge is completely tore out, and they had one, one end wall put in. They just moved the power lines, so hopefully I can get out there this week and look at that.
They were driving pylons, is what I've heard. I have been down to it, so I'm just.
And then.
Do you want me to put all the signed documents back in here, so they can get scanned? They can scan it?
It's right there.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
And then I'm going to be at a training next week.
Thank you.
Monday through Thursday, so I won't be around. So I just wanted to let you know if there was anything that came up, you can still get ahold of me, but I won't be here.
And you sent an email about one meeting that you cannot attend.
So the Kansas County Highway Association. It's a really good association we belong to, that's next week, or the week of the 15th. My mom has surgery the 16th, so I won't be able to attend, but if any of you could, it's in Manhattan. It's kind of like what we went to in Oskaloosa, but it's the whole thing.
Whole state?
It's, yes. It's their spring meeting.
Oh, you sent that information to us, okay, yes, I didn't see that.
And there's, I can't, I mean, I just can't.
I'm unavailable, I wish I could, because those are really good.
They are really good.
If I could have planned ahead, I probably could have booked you, I think I pulled on some.
It'll depend if, in the field, I can't go.
Right, I just wanted to give you guys, you know.
Do we have to pre-register for that? I didn't read.
You need to get ahold of them, yeah.
Okay.
And let them know, so, but our dues and everything are paid up on all that. And I believe it said if you've never been before, it pays. I'm thinking off the top of my head, it may pay for your hotel room, I can't remember who were your, or the registration fee, I can't remember, Eric, but it's in, it should be all in that.
Yeah.
That I forwarded you. And then pass, when, when are we opening the, is it 23rd? On the, let me look. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring it up, just bring it on.
No, that's, that's a week, we're sending out. We were avoiding, I think, the 15th and 16th, because it was on the wrong.
Right.
The wrong day. Is this the killer?
Yes. It's the killer.
And what is that, opening, what's that on?
The interest.
It's May 9th.
For the loan.
May 9th.
It's May 9th, it's next week, okay. I knew it was coming up quick, but I forgot about it right now, so. Everybody good?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, you too, wish your mom luck on her surgery.
Yep, thank you.
We have a little bit of time before Kathy comes, and I forgot to mention in the additions to the agenda that I do have a couple purchase orders that I'd like to get approved for Senior Village from our administrator, Lindsey Wood. I have a gas bill over the past three months in the amount of $5,172.22. This will be from Senior Village, the Symmetry Energy Solutions. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
I would like to also review the process that, since that got sent to a work email, that was an individual. I mean, how do we ensure that something don't get left out again? I mean, I don't know of what kind of procedure, if the, if like Mark could be CC'd on anything like that, just so that we see that these bills are being paid, or, I, I don't know, that's just an idea.
Maybe we can visit with IT about doing like a bounce back to that email, so it gets returned to sender, so that sender would know that, oh, they came back, we need to pass them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably.
Because I, we don't need to get into situations that simple like this. If there's a tech, especially a tech, that's the simpler.
And that would actually be a good process to implement for all departments, that a staff member's email gets bounced back to the department head, and then a department head email gets bounced back to either our financial director or clerk, so that we always have a check.
There's an alert.
Yeah.
We need an alert on these, especially on these bigger, bigger expenditures.
Yes. Okay, and then I have another purchase order from Senior Village to the Waldinger Corporation to furnish the materials and perform replacing the booster tank and element gasket in the Jackson's dish machine in the amount of $2,645.44. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Hand these down to Kaylee. Oh, you have a copy. I didn't have the. Yep, there you go, thank you. While we have time, I might just bump myself up, if that's okay, that way Kathy. While we have time, I might just bump myself up, if that's okay, that way Kathy has the remainder of the time, since we have a little bit of time. After going to the KCCA last week, it was pretty neat to see several of the counties have an invocation at the beginning of their meetings. I've always wondered why the city did it and the county never did it, and it was just one of those things that no one's ever really brought it up or to the table. So, I have a resolution that I had altered based on a template from Butler and Harvey County of how to get it implemented, if you guys are willing. And I shared it with the county counselor, he found a couple of things he wants to just alter for it, but I wanted to bring it in front of you. Father Jeremy at St. Benedict's and Tricia Vesser at Cummings Christian helped me put together a list of all of the minister, ministers, pastors, priests from Atchison County, countywide. So, we would have a list to be able to get them. And with our Zoom platform, I think it would be easy to, if they can't make it in person. But just wanted to see if you guys are, would be willing, I would be willing to make a motion to add invocation to our weekly agenda. Just wanted to, to share that with you and.
So that's on my original list of things I had questions about, and which I guess we never got to that one. But I know the city, we, it's always a big deal to not use the same faith all the time.
Yeah.
And just kind of, kind of mix it up and keep it on the safe zone.
Absolutely.
It seems to satisfy the rules.
Yeah, no, and that's kind of how that resolution reads, and then when they had both sent me their list and I made into one, it's, it's pretty incredible, like, all over the county, how many resources that there are and different.
I don't know how many of the clergy in the area are affiliated with ministerial lands, or if that's just more of an inside-the-town thing, do you know?
I don't know.
Do I know, because that's, that's another network, which includes a lot of these folks. So, how does the logistics work? Are they automatically on the list, or someone gonna have to contact them and get confirmation?
So, I had talked to Kaylee a little bit about it this morning, because I definitely don't want to add more work to our clerk, but also, I think with that many, and, I mean, we could outline the entire year pretty easy and just have them scheduled. I mean, it won't, and I would be willing to do that if we need to, or, I mean, I was just trying to provide it in the easiest form possible, there's the contacts, and here's the resolution typed up, and.
The backup plan at the city was if the pastor, minister, clerk, he failed to show up to a meeting, it usually was defaulted to anyone on the commissioner in the room who was willing to give an invocation. So, I would suggest we all have a couple stuck in the back of our files here, because that will happen.
Yep, and there's also a part in there that a moment of silence works too, because some commissioners didn't feel like they wanted to take on that role. It's so, so just something, you know, in the place that we can't, but yeah, absolutely, we could step up and, and take part in that.
Do you want to think on this for a week, next week?
I don't, I mean, I don't need to think, I, I'm ready to make a motion to implement an invocation at the beginning of our meetings.
Starting when, starting like a couple of weeks. It's, well, what's our, we're gone the 16th.
So, for logistics, to get it to where it's seamless, we could start it in June. That gives us a few weeks to get kind of the calendar organized.
Well, who hopes you put it together for Jeremy?
So, Father Jeremy is part of the group in the city, so he sent me that list. And then Tricia Vesser is from Cummings Christian Church, and then through Atchison County Community School, they have a list of more rural churches outside of the city of Atchison. So, it's both lists put together, so.
Now, when we change our meetings, say, a couple of weeks before, who's gonna notify them? I mean, how, how is that logistics gonna work? Because I think it's gonna end up being more of a, you know, scramble, that, oh, we didn't notify the, the next person on the list.
So. I mean.
And who's, who's that gonna fall on?
It's not difficult, we could set up a, an email group, and it's just, it's just communication. And, I mean, so that could be put on our organizational meeting of, I mean, because we have to notify everybody when we make a change also of location or times, and, I mean, how are you currently notifying people, Kaylee, of different things?
For what?
The clerk, well, to Eric's point, like, if we change meeting times, there's probably a.
But that's, that's a general announcement, and, and people that are wanting to attend our meeting are, are looking at that. But if you have someone scheduled, then the meeting changes, you're gonna have to send them a direct email or contact.
I think that that was discussed, that the clerk was gonna have to start doing that to make sure, I think that that was that communication before. Okay, I'd like to. Office would do that, so.
Should, should we read this, so the public can hear what we're saying?
Well, there, there are two U.S. Supreme Court cases that are kind of seminal on this. One is Marsh versus Chambers, which was the 1983 case, I think it was. And that, that's mentioned in the draft of the resolution. And the other is Town of Greek, Town of Grease, New York versus Galloway. And I had just noticed that there was a situation where the, one of the quotes was a little bit, needed a little bit of editing, and I, I made a couple of other edits to it. I haven't had a chance to check the, all of the quotes to make sure that they're accurate, because we don't want to adopt one that misrepresents what the Supreme Court had said.
Do we want to adopt it next week?
I certainly could, yeah. I could, I could email it to you today.
Okay.
To look at, but you've got the competing interests of not wanting to alienate anybody, and at the same time, by having coerced religion, and at the same time, not wanting to alienate the other side by having the message so watered down that it is not recognizable as a prayer, I guess. So, anyway, the, the Town of Greek, Greece, excuse me, case had some language in there about accomplishing that, so I had added that to it as well. I will email it to y'all by the end of the day.
Perfect.
You can take it up next week.
Okay, so we'll just take it next week, okay, great, thanks, guys. Kathy should be here any moment. Oh, you know, I hope that she knows we're meeting up here. I think I put that on the.
You told her that email.
Okay, I was hoping I did, I thought I did, but I was. Her budget, yeah, so her budget, we have to approve in an open meeting, because she was submitting it this week. And we're just a workshop, so we'll, then we'll, we'll go into workshop after, after her.
I'm early, I just.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Thought you had.
She's running late, not switching.
Well, she's still in a minute. She really needed time, she really needed to be here, so she'll, I'm sure she'll be running for the board soon. Yours, fine, I'm just encouraging on everybody's space over here with all of this stuff.
Sometimes a desk can't get big enough.
You're telling me.
Need a bigger desk. Signboards on or.
So many things that we need to do today, thank you.
And we're in the digital age, you know, less paper.
Hey, I didn't bring this paper, it was.
Killed the trees.
Okay, Chappie Crockett made corrections with her budget.
Did you? Watch Shelley with me, she's gonna kind of walk me through this, since it's my first time.
Did everybody get a copy of the budget, and I know that you didn't get comp?
So, we got a copy this morning, but I usually make hard copies for us, but I know each one was like 35 pages, so I didn't want to do that, really.
Okay.
So, if we just all take the time to pull it up on our screens.
Which one are you doing first?
Yeah, which one do you want to go through first, because we have the spreadsheets open.
Let's do the adult plan first.
Okay.
Adult personnel?
Fiscal year 24/4, quarterly report adult, is that the one you're talking about?
Oh, that could be one of them. That is, yeah.
There it is, I got it. Adult personnel? No, FY 24/4, this is. Oh, okay, top one. This is adult, this is juvenile, should be the adult one. It will be the top one, I'll pull it up. No, no, second one. Second one. I'm scrolling up, so I'll look, the top one at the time. It was top one at the moment.
So, every year, you have to come up with goals and objectives to meet those goals. And I'm gonna let Kathy go over what she has decided to work on. And the first goal, though, is mandated that it always has to be there, that's always gotta be a goal. The 75% are higher, so I'll let her go over the goals with you real quick, for the adult program.
Okay, the first one there, the, the one that she said is mandated. Our success rate at the end of FY '22 is 78%, so we have to go 3% higher. That's why our success rate for the new fiscal year is gonna have to be 81%, that's our goal to reach. And, and then we'll keep track of those. And then the second goal is to ensure that all the staff are using, they're, you know, using case management as well as they can. But, and that means by reviewing, the director will review the client checklist, and that they're making sure officers, officers are implementing case plans, and we'll do file reviews, and we'll do that quarterly. And then the third one there is to ensure that court, that homework is assigned to moderate, to moderate and high-risk offenders. We do give homework to, especially our high-risk offenders, and we have different tools that we use, like thinking reports and care guides and different things like that. And we will create a spreadsheet to document the tool and why it's being used. And we'll pull this, we'll do the files, six files for review quarterly, and.
For the behavioral response?
For, yes, for the, on the behavioral response script, which I did include a copy of that, I think, in the, in the plan, but I don't think I emailed it to you. And then, that's due a quarterly review, six files to determine if they're utilized properly. So, we'll just review six files each quarter.
And then she'll track that throughout the year, the director will track that, and we'll send that on to D S C and those advisors as well. As far as the budget, we were allotted $284,566.87. Can you, sorry, I'm just gonna pull that sheet up.
That's probably in the actual comp plan toward the end of it, probably.
Okay.
Hey, it starts on page 19.
Perfect.
So which document?
The, the actual, the comp plan, I think it says Atchison.
It's the PDF, yeah.
Yeah, the PDF file.
Corrections, applications, PDF, 335 KB?
Yes, page 19.
As you look through there, is there anything that you have questions on?
Sorry, I'm gonna print us just a copy of those last three pages, so we can, where's it printed? Wes's office, which is. Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
This is the page that starts with fees?
Just the very bottom, the grant funded internal budget.
This page starts with, yeah, the, the budget, and it's got the agency operations there at the top.
I got the, I'm gonna run document, agency fees, I'm seeing, since it's on our document, probably.
So, the very first attachment in her email, Atchison. Yep.
I'm on that one now. Yeah, I was on the others. Too much of a lot of light. So everything's just the same? Oh, grant funded budget, I got you.
Oh, I think you said there's more. Well, I'm doing the juvenile too, Shelley.
Okay, I'll be back to get that, Wes, hold on.
Just so we can gather both.
Wes is kind of in touch with the U.S. budget again with increasing copy paper.
I know, right? Yeah, he says you guys have gone through a rave of paper today.
I didn't even say so.
So this is the adult budget.
Alright, so is there anything on there that you see out of line, or that you have questions about? If you'll notice rent, there was not enough money provided by the state to cover the cost of rent that will have to come out of the reimbursement account, which that budget's not due till October. And that money is the money we receive from cornerstones of care for doing UAs, bond supervision.
So, I wouldn't know that by looking at this, so where, where else do we have the documentation on the rent or any other expenses that are different?
On this, the total budget it needs, the grant funded.
Yeah. 84, 566. The grant's not enough.
Well, our rent is $1,700 a month, and if we split that through each program, we're talking 50, 50% comes out of the adult grant, so whatever is half.
So how much is your rent?
A year?
This, this is a yearly grant?
Yes.
So you're getting this much for the whole year?
Okay, so, we're getting $284,566 for the whole year from, from K D O C for the adult program. Everything is, not everything, but most of it is split, 50% adult and 50% juvenile, which has a whole nother breakdown. So, we have to pay 50% of the rent out of the adult side, and 50%. So, we have to pay fifty percent of the rent out of the adult side, and fifty percent, um, Pat, I know you're getting to... So, eight-fifty?
And half of seventeen hundred.
Okay, but for the year, what, what's our rent, seventeen hundred times twelve?
What is it again, seventeen hundred times what?
Twelve.
Twenty thousand, four hundred.
So we'd have to pay ten thousand, two hundred out of the AISP fund, which we're short. So that fund is coming out of a miscellaneous account that we have, a reimbursement account. Sometimes it's easier just to take it out of the, out of a big chunk of change, instead of splitting it out of a bunch of little stuff. That way it's easier for budgeting purposes.
Or is your staff also compensated that way, the fifty-fifty of adult and juvenile?
So, both adult officers are one-hundred percent adult. The director, um, the, let's just go with the director, and then we have a, an officer who helps the officers. And that position is split fifty-fifty. And then we have an administrative assistance slash juvenile intake officer, so I think hers is split.
Hers is fifty percent adult admin, and then the rest of it is on the juvenile.
Okay.
That's, all these splits are on this last sheet here with the...
They could, I think it is this one.
Yes, yeah, that's how they come out as, most of them. But like, the adult officers, when they're getting reimbursed for their cell phone, it's going to be a hundred percent AISP. The director is gonna have the split of fifty, ten, forty, ten. That should be thirty, ten, thirty, ten. But the totals that you see on here are for adult only. And we budgeted right down to the, to the number. Any questions on the adult?
So is there anything else that, rent doesn't meet the budget need?
Um...
Is rent the only one that's...
Might, you know, it just, gonna have to see how it comes out through the, through the end of the year, because we might have to take some money for drug and alcohol, uh, testing supplies.
Yeah, that's one thing I was wondering about, because things are costing more, so...
Yeah, so, you know...
How many you need?
You know, yeah, you know, so you just, you just have to track your books throughout the year and make sure that you've got enough money. If not, then I have to take it out of that other account.
Did you want the juvenile?
If you wanna go through the goals. Huh, does she wanna do the goals first for the juvenile?
On the juvenile, yeah, I can see that after. Okay, this'll all be nice. Um, the goals for, there's two different, we're doing, brand new to us this year, we will be starting doing juvenile intake in July. Um, we've not ever budgeted for that before, so this is brand new to Atchison completely, so, um, so our, on that one, our goals for that, I don't know if I've got that off or not, but I know mainly for the juvenile intake, it's to get the, get policy written, get, and we'll go by the KDOC standards on writing policy for intake and getting officer, the intake officers trained that we're gonna have to hire to do all that stuff. And then on the, on the other side, the JISP, our regular juvenile, you know, we'll continue to ensure that staff are using their best practices in case management, we'll review cases quarterly, um, we'll go over those with the officers, and the same kind of stuff that we're gonna do on the adult side as well. And then, um, we are gonna be doing, well, we, one of our, um, Shelley was talking about our admin girl's gonna be doing fifty percent juvenile stuff too. She's taking some training, and she'll be working in the school, in the schools with an officer that comes up from Leavenworth, and they're gonna be doing programs in the school for the youth. Let's see what else, uh, and when, when it gets to the budget on that, on the juvenile stuff, Leavenworth, we've budgeted our, Micah, who is our part-time person, Leavenworth is supposed to be paying us fifty percent of her salary. They're gonna, supposed to be cut, because she is gonna be doing Leavenworth Road grant, a prevention grant, that gives, that they're gonna be going into the schools and running the programs in the schools, and Micah will be working with them to do that. And so they're paying fifty percent of her salary that'll get reimbursed us on the juvenile side of the budget, so...
So Leavenworth's paying fifty percent of the salary?
They're going to be paying fifty percent of her salary once, once we get that, in July, start in July, through their prevention grant. It's not, yeah, it'll come from their, the prevention grant, the Leavenworth Road, and they wrote her into their grant. We've got her budget at a hundred percent Mars, but they're gonna reimburse us fifty percent of her salary, so...
Sorry, I'm looking like this because I've tried to gather knowledge on what our meeting with the Leavenworth County Commissioners will be about this, and, and my understanding was different, so...
That's still, it's still my understanding, Leavenworth is paying half of Michael, Micah's salary, correct?
Yeah, this is something that the previous director had worked out with Jamie. And since we couldn't come to a consensus, we went ahead and did it as such, which includes juvenile intake on here as well.
Right.
Which I don't think we really knew.
Okay, so I just wanna have an understanding of what we're budgeting for, so, because my understanding, when we meet with Leavenworth County Commissioners, of, they were utilizing some of their, they were supplementing based on their budget with tax dollars from Leavenworth County. And so that was kind of like the point of contention with their taxpayers of why they're, they're asking this. So we were talking about possibly us reimbursing Leavenworth County for those positions. So, that was a discussion I was looking to come to the table with, is that still...
I think what we were hoping for, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would reimburse Leavenworth County for any intakes that were done after five o'clock, outside of office hours.
Okay.
And since there was no answer, no definite answer, we went ahead and budgeted juvenile intake because we didn't want to, in case... We didn't know what was gonna happen, so we have to have that money budgeted, so...
So you have it budgeted, so regardless how our meeting with them go, if we come to an agreement where we're reimbursing it, it's in our budget, so we have those funds.
Yes, perfect, exactly, okay.
But I just wanted to understand that a little bit.
And if that agreement changes, and it doesn't have to go that way, we just send the money back?
Exactly, perfect, okay.
But I think, you know, we would prefer to have them do, us do intakes during the day and then take care of the intakes after hours, so...
Because we're, we're looking at, and you'll see it in our juvenile budget, where we have it budgeted for contractual workers, you know, for juvenile intake. You know how hard it is to hire people anyway, and to get, we have to have several people to be, um...
On call.
On call, and that's...
Could you get a copy?
Yeah, she gave me a copy.
Of the juvenile?
Did I not hand you?
Yes, this is the juvenile.
Oh, here, oh, thank you.
Because we have budgeted...
Oh, I thought she was looking, okay.
We have budgeted for contractual on-take call, on-take, on-call intake workers for twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. That's at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a week, and then if they get, actually get called out to do an intake, it's twenty-five dollars an hour on top of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five a week. So, I don't know how easy it's gonna be to get people to do that, to hire people to do that, so we're hoping that we don't have to do it ourselves, and... Let's go from there.
Okay, so the juvenile budget's two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one, nineteen.
And there's one full-time officer. And then the two adult officers have nothing to do with this. But it should line up pretty, pretty much the same, like I said, there's a few things that'll be different. Plus juvenile intake is not in the adult plan at all.
And it's split, the juvenile funds are split into the three different programs, so...
That's the fifty, ten, thirty, ten.
Right.
So, and then if it's a hun, if it's a hundred percent juvenile, wow.
If it's, if it's not JIAS, it's fifty, you know, it's forty...
Sixty?
On juvenile intake, or, let me see, forty, ten, ten, forty, ten.
No, I'm saying if it's a hundred percent adult.
Oh, okay, yes.
What did you ask about a hundred percent, two adult ISOs?
So, yeah.
Page twenty, the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, now I was thinking of the juvenile, oh.
Like, this year Cynthia was split up twenty-five percent JISP and seventy-five percent CMA, and now her salary would be... Forty, thirty, and sixty, so sixty percent CMA, forty percent JISP, and ten percent JIAS. Juvenile intake, is this the, all the acronyms? I know.
Be a test later.
Do you guys have any other questions for Shelley or Kathy?
Well, this is more of a, again, I, we had courts this morning, and I asked the same question. Does this get plugged into CIC? This one does not, okay. I was wondering if you worked on CIC, because that's the form we get most of our budget forms.
Oh.
And I didn't know whether, because this morning, we were informed that it normally, they have to plug it in for our accounting system anyway, but we didn't get that form, and I didn't know whether this one was similar.
Yeah, we've never done it before, I've always done the budget meeting with you, like now.
Right.
And, uh, I mean, our money's in there, but it doesn't come out in budget form, because DOC has their own budget, so...
So, you guys are basically a hundred percent grant funded?
Yes.
Footnote, unless there's something short.
Yes.
And then where does that money come from? You kept saying the other fund.
We have a reimbursement account, and so we receive funds from doing bond supervisions for the court and doing UAs for like cornerstones of care.
Okay.
And, uh, we also get...
So it's all fee-based, fee-driven source, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So there's really no impact on the county budget, I don't think.
No, there's...
There shouldn't be, there's nothing out there that we're not seeing.
What we, what we receive from, uh, the county is in kind, and that would be housekeeping, maintenance, road and bridge company, plows our driveway, our parking lot, our part of it, so...
Okay, do you guys have any other questions, staying on track with our schedule? I'd look for a motion to approve the adult, um, first judicial, judicial district community corrections for Atchison County, Kansas, in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the juvenile budget in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Then move to second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pass this, agree, this is a...
Thank you, ladies.
Signatures?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess I need to amend my motion, no, no, to allow the chair to sign, apologize for that.
I assume so, that's fine.
Okay, I didn't, I thought you...
I don't think you specifically said that we do.
I didn't.
I really appreciate you guys squeezing the sand.
I apologize if we didn't get back to you.
No, that's, that's no worries.
All right, there you go, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, that, um, do we have any county councilor updates?
Yes, you, you want...
Well, so we're, we're going to, um, move into a workshop setting for budget discussions after our hour meeting, so, um, we're really almost ready to, to adjourn for budget workshops, if, after your updates.
Okay, um, we, David and Mercy here have signed that agreement.
Okay, perfect.
I was afraid that we hadn't sent it to him, but I emailed him, and then half an hour later, he emailed me back the copy of the signed agreement that's been signed by everybody.
Great, thank you.
The, uh, we had some discussion about the, the crisis center at, uh, at Cushing Hospital. Um, it's a project that you helped to, to fund. The statutes on care and treatment give law enforcement officers authority to take a person that the officer believes is a mentally ill person in need of care and treatment into custody and take them someplace to get screened. The statute explicitly says that they may take the person to the crisis intervention center. And there's a statute, and there is a specific statute, KSA fifty-nine dash twenty-nine C zero-two, and the definition of the crisis intervention center that's in there talks about a place that's open twenty-four, three-sixty-five, uh, and that it will take both voluntary and involuntary patients. And, uh, the center in Leavenworth, I did verify with Adam Newman Wiggs, is licensed only for voluntary patients. So if we have a situation where a person does not want to go, or does not acknowledge any need to go, that will still not be a resource, we'll, we'll still have to be holding them at the, at Amberwell, so...
Okay, on that, I'd like to expand a little on that, because I actually did, uh, reach out to, uh, that individual, and he's due to speak, uh, to this commission on the thirtieth, and I want to confirm, uh, confirm that, at ten o'clock on the thirtieth of May. I'd forgot to put the time on the email, and I included the other commissioners on that. I didn't have some of the contact information, and I was hoping the other commissioners could pass that on, um, to the, to Amberwell was one that I didn't have, and also, I don't have Stevie Durkin's...
I've got it for you.
Okay, if you could pass them on, because I've lost them somehow, I, I had that, um...
Do you want to send his email to you, or just...
I think that would be better, if you don't mind continuing to be the point person, because you're doing a good job of making sure that it, everybody gets included.
And I was just wondering too, I thought, the judges ought to be included on this? Is there a, an email that would catch all judges, or should I, how would that, would be the best way for me to... You know, like here, we have commissioners, I didn't know if there was one, like judges that...
I think if you sent one to Steve Crossland, he could make sure it got to everybody that needed it, or to, yeah, that's probably best. Or the, John Fresh will be the judge that's assigned to those cases now. I assume he has a john dot fresh at kscords.gov email address, but I...
Bria might have all those contacts too, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of her.
You have her email.
Yeah.
She emailed us the budget.
Okay, so I will, if you can give me any contact information, and I will send that back out. I wanted to get some of the obvious players first, that, the sheriff and county counselor, and is that, is he on for the thirtieth? At ten o'clock, okay, I wanted to double-check the time.
I would include Amy Folsom at Amberwell with that, I can...
I have hers from Senior Real Estate, I can send you.
Okay.
And, um, you're given the community health clinic, you, you have to have that one, so...
Right now.
Perfect, any other updates? Oh, thank you.
We, we had, um, talked a few weeks ago about, um, having a little summary of the... We, we had talked a few weeks ago about having a little summary of the Parline Trust for the board, for the advisory board. And that's what I had developed in the meetings on Wednesday. And I wanted to make sure that that summary was acceptable to all of you, because. Thank you.
Do you guys wanna review it and just let him know if you have any concerns prior to Wednesday? We gotta keep going, we're ten minutes past Shelley's budget time, so I'm just trying.
I don't have that.
Are you sure?
It's not that big.
Okay, I'm trying to. Keep us.
Sorry.
Very, very briefly, and I know it was mentioned that, I watched your last week's meeting, but I didn't watch it until yesterday. The state statute would require that we notify the state historic preservation officer before we put a statue, before we put a statue on courthouse grounds.
Yeah, Brian did contact somebody down there and he had to send a follow-up, so he should have a okay on that. Person coming.
Everything else, call next week.
Okay, awesome. No executive sessions, public comment? Not seen any public comment, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn into budget workshops for the rest of this afternoon.
So move, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pass it three to zero. We are adjourning into workshops with register D.
And I'm gonna take a restroom right before we get started.